And as usual, we will start with our chaplain prayer and pledges. So Gary, you're here, you're on. Come forward, please.
Morning, Mayor, members of the council.
Morning, everybody. Will you please join with me? Father, in the name of Jesus, we bow before you, the author and finisher of our faith, giving thanks to you first for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to assemble together to take care of the business of this city. We ask you to endow our mayor, our city council members, and all of those that are here with wisdom and knowledge to do those things that are pleasing in thy sight, to glorify you with the office they hold. We pray for every citizen of this city and every resident, for every business. We pray, God, that you bless our first responders, our firefighters and medics. And we ask you, Lord, help us to be a community that's even better than what it is today. In Jesus' name we pray. Let everybody say amen. And will you repeat the pledge after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm on the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
There are no proclamations or recognitions on today's agenda, so we will move into public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the DAs, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. At this point, I will open up the floor for any public comment. Come forward. Are you making? Oh, okay. Okay.
Hello.
Good morning.
My name is Jackie Chestnut. For 27 years, my name was Jackie Chestnut Robinson, and I was married to Dennis Alfred Robinson. And I am here speaking publicly for a lot of things that have occurred in this city, in this county, in the past three and a half years of my life and my husband's life, and the 35 years that I have lived here, and my husband born and raised here. And we have been valued members of this community for that entire time. So, a couple of things I want to speak to, please. Public speaking. This is our right as citizens, and we were told, though y'all don't like it, we have the right to do it. And I have three minutes to speak. It was indicated last time that because I'm not a member of a city, citizen, that I really didn't have a right to speak here. But this is the county I live in, and San Angelo is the county seat, and it is the place where I spend most of my money. It is where my businesses resided for many, many, many years. My husband and I lived for most of our lives until 1998, and we bought a place in Knickerbocker, which is in Tongreen County. But this is the place where we have done our lives, in San Angelo. You're the county seat, and there are responsibilities around that, so I have a right to speak here. So, I would like for any of you that are interested to please refer to the Jackie Chestnut story on YouTube. Joe Hyde with San Angelo Live was nice enough to do my story after three and a half years of the atrocities that has occurred in this city over that time. And I won't go into the details of that, but it incurs the death and dismemberment of my husband and the attempted death of me. And I am no longer interested in living afraid here in the community which I plan to reside for the rest of my life. And my property has been threatened, my life has been threatened, my property has been taken, and the very property on which is my homestead and my home, the ranch I own in Knickerbocker, Texas, has been threatened over and over and over again by the people in this community. And they are public people, and they are lawyers, and they are judges and other people, and I will not stand for it. Now, I will finish this conversation, and those of y'all, because I am not going to sit silently by and live in fear of people that do not respect the rights of the citizens of this county and this town. I've been arrested, I've been assaulted, I've been abused in ways that are beyond my comprehension. So, those things will stop in season, and I will be public about it, and I'm not going to have it anymore. So, the next thing is sewer gas. We have an entire city-
Jackie, I believe your three minutes is up.
Well, I will pass this document to you about sewer gas in a town that is filled with sewer gas in every facility that I go into, which is a health and safety hazard. I'll be back. Shall I give these to you? Y'all need to see the sewer gas.
Further public comment?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Braxton Zella, 720 North Buchanan Street. I work for Texas Disposal Systems, a company with deep roots here in San Angelo, all the way back to the 1950s, when the family ownership began Acme Iron and Metal. A foundation in the metal recycling business here in San Angelo led the ownership of TDS to explore various other means of hauling, handling, and recycling waste. Years of subsequent hard work and dedication led to a company that now has a large footprint across the entire state of Texas, serving the residential, curbside, and commercial needs of over 40 different municipalities. As a reminder for you all, the City of San Angelo has been in a contract with your current solid waste and recycling vendor for the last decade. Excuse me. My understanding is that later this year, that contract is up for renewal, and if renewed, the current contract makes provision for your current vendor to be your provider for an entire other decade. The financial ramifications over the life of a municipal solid waste and recycling contract for a city the size of San Angelo are monolithic. Competition amongst vendors forces clarity and drives better options for your citizenry. So I'm here today to ask you all to consider directing your city staff to consider a competitive bidding process. TDS would love the opportunity to serve the citizens of San Angelo, but we cannot unless you all find some consensus that competition amongst vendors is a good idea for your citizenry. If this is something that you all would consider, and if you haven't already, I'd encourage you to start the conversation now, because effective transitions amongst vendors take time to accomplish with excellence. So we thought it important to convey that we'd love the chance to serve citizens of San Angelo, and appreciate your time this morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Richard Rivas. I live at 806 Julian Street in San Angelo, and I refer to it as the Barrio Estates. I'm very proud of the Barrio, and I'm sure we all are. I've lived here in San Angelo for all my life, going on 68 years. My wife that I have now wanted to leave San Angelo. I said, "No, I'm not leaving to San Angelo because my roots are here." And I was always, I stayed here because what the intentions of San Angelo was supposed to be a retirement community. And I'm retired now, so here I am. But either way, that's not why I'm here. Why I am here is, with all due respect to you, Mayor Gunter and the city council, I'm bringing up a concern of mine and others. I have three sons, three sons. Two of them have played basketball here at the Recreational Building, the Southside Rec and the Carl Ray Rec. They are both in their 30s now. Back then, they were eight and 11 years old. Back then, there was a big problem with seating and overflow of people in the buildings. Now, fast forward 25 years later, we now have nine grandchildren, grandchildren aging from three months to 14 years old. We are deeply concerned over the safety of our children and our grandchildren during the games. They are overpacked with adults, children, and infants. And is there not a capacity to those buildings? The exits are blocked with overflow of people standing in front of them, and shouldn't the restrooms be cleaned and sanitized? I know that public places like venues, restaurants, halls and bars and et cetera have strict guidelines that have to be followed for safety reasons. If there was any type of emergency there, it would be chaos. I would like to either have expansion or relocation of these facilities, and the city should take this up and move on it. Do they ever do any random walkthroughs during the events? Because they do the businesses. The kids... I don't know why I'm so nervous.
Your message is good, so just keep on going.
Okay.
Don't be nervous.
The kids are the future of San Angelo, and we need to invest in them as well as the safety of the parents, grandparents, and the great-grandparents. I believe there is future professional talent here in San Angelo, and I am going to quote Mayor Gunter, "With all due respect," and quote, "Needs come before the wants." I believe you said that just the other day, and I was-
Probably did.
And I said, "You know what? That's a good quote." And I do truly believe from my heart that this is a need. You know, I would hate to see anybody, anybody's kids, grandkids, get hurt in some way, form, or fashion. And, and thank you for giving me the time and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for coming forward.
I'm asking y'all to consider it. Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Mike Stewart, University Heat and Cooling. Asking you guys to pull Agenda G from the consent, consent agenda, please.
Got it. Further public comment? All right, with that, then we will close the public comment section of the agenda, and we will move into the consent agenda. We will pull Item G as requested, and then I'll ask Larry if he has an item he would like to pull. Okay. Karen? I'm going to pull Item E. Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
All right, with that, may I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
With the exception of Item G?
Yes, sir.
I'll move that motion.
And it's seconded by Larry. With that, we will take a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of Items E and G, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. We will go into Item E. Consider awarding WU-01-24 Collection Agency Services to Online Information Services for collection purposes in the amount of 19% of the collection balance and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Shane, if you'll just give us some background on the, we call collection balance, is that, what areas do these balances exist? What's our history in terms of ability to collect? And what is the remaining balance of monies that we need to collect?
Okay, this is from our utility billing, that we send out our monthly billing statements for everything from water, sewer, stormwater, you know, all of the, our normal billing procedures that we have, and these are the past due amounts that have been defaulted on, basically. And so, let's see, so that's where this, or that's the funds that are delinquent. We're currently at about 1.7 million, still it is, out in delinquency. And that is down from our last contract that we had with this same group, from about $3 million, so.
And how far back are these delinquencies? Are we looking at 1.7 million from 10 years ago? Is it basically a five-year, define the timeline?
This, this company will actually go back six or seven years, is where most of them will only go back two or three years, or maybe four years, but this company is going back six or seven years, and so, but this is our delinquent accounts over, you know, like the past decade, and so, but this company does, they reach back further than most other companies do, and so they are, and the results so far have been with the, with the previous five years have been really, I would think, pretty excellent compared to, to what, what we're doing without, without them. So, we are seeing some results, or actually quite a bit of results, so.
Okay. Are there further questions from council on this item?
Shane, how often do we do this?
We started with this one, with this company, I believe, five years ago, and then the contract has expired, and so we went back out for, we went back out for proposals again. And then, again, when we received our, the responses, this company really stood out, so, with their abilities.
And how long is this contract for?
I believe we have it for one year with four one-year extensions.
That's what I thought I saw in there.
Yes, sir.
So, we would just continue then over the next four years to use them to try to get that down even further below the 1.7 million?
Correct, yes, sir. That's, that's our goal.
But that would continue to grow, though, so just because there's 1.7 today doesn't mean that tomorrow it might not be 1.9. Is that correct?
Correct.
Going to continue-
As, as, as we have those that we cannot collect or have been defaulted on, then that does go into collections. Yes, yes, ma'am. So it could grow, but hopefully it will continue to decline.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? We may have a motion for approval of Item E.
So moved.
Second.
And seconded by Harry. Any public comment concerning this Item E? Yes, sir.
This is Item G?
No, it's E.
Oh, E.
Give me a minute. Seeing no public comment, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of Item E, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Item G is consider authorizing the city manager to reject all bids received for RFB FC-01-24 HVAC unit replacements at Chase State Office Building. And you must be on, not Bob.
I'm on.
Okay.
Bob is in Arizona. This item is related to our systematic process to replace all the aging HVAC units at the Chase State Building. We replaced 10 last year, and we want to replace 12 this year before it gets too warm and make sure that the systems all work at that facility. We set up some bids and specifications, bid out this project to replace 12 units. We got the bids back, we got five good bids, and we realized in evaluating those bids that our qualifications weren't quite what we really wanted, and so at this point, we are asking for rejection of the bids.
So the bids we're rejecting are because we didn't, we weren't clear enough and specific enough about-
And our specifications.
-what the need was in terms of these HVAC systems? Is that clear?
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
It's not so much that we were unclear, we specked out what we're looking for, Mayor. And so, really what we got back as far as the bids, Carl, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't what we were looking for as far as the specs that we sent out.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. Do I have questions from council? Larry?
How soon is the rebidding process going to start?
We hope within the month.
The description will be a little bit clearer-
Yes.
...on exactly what products we want, or-
In terms of the specifications, yes.
Other questions or comments for Carl on this item? Okay, seeing none? All right, then may I have a motion for approval of Item G? What?
Yes. I'll move that, make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Karen. Public comment, please.
Mike Stewart, University Heat and Cooling. I was the only local contractor that bid this job. I did meet with all three representatives on the roof of this building. We did, all the contractors did ask questions to the representatives of what equipment they wanted. They stated they wanted everything except a train unit. And they also, we also asked them how long they wanted the, the bid, how long would it take to do the job? They told us they'd like to have it completed in the fiscal year due to the issue of equipment concerns. It's hard to get some of the equipment. I do have three emails here where they awarded me the bid. I went and got all my stuff ready to go, and then I got an email stating that we were going to be awarded, I thought I was going to be awarded the bid today, and yet I'm here saying that we're not going to get the bid today. So I spent a lot of time and effort on this, working this, and I'm going to bid the same amount next month. It'd be the same amount that I'm going to bid for the same equipment, unless they state it's going to be, they want train or carrier or rude. But I did everything that I was supposed to do for you guys, you know, to do the job. And like I said, I was the only local guy. Now, they did state to me that they did give the job to a company out of Dallas, and then I told them, "Well, we're going to have some issues, guys, if that's the case." And then I got an email stating they were going to reject the bids. So I just think something, and I told them that, you know, it was kind of, kind of concerning to me the way that I was treated on bidding this. I wasted a lot of time, a lot of effort to do the deal. But I'll be back, I'll bid the same amount next, next month if it's bid it. And I hope they do put the bid out and it doesn't take the money and put it somewhere else.
Well, we need the units, so I don't think it's a question-
I know you do.
-of setting the money.
But I have, I have all three of the emails here stating what I bid, and they awarded me the bid, and I got, I got the runaround from three people.
May I see that, those emails, please, sir?
Yes, yes. There's the award bid, and then my equipment-
Thank you.
...issue, some of my equipment, I had all the equipment, is all available except two units was going to be sometime after May. So, so, so we did, you know, all the contractors on the roof did ask them what they wanted and what they, how long we had to do the job.
Thank you for coming forward-
Thank you.
...and bringing this to our attention.
You're welcome.
Greatly appreciate it. Jackie?
My name is Jackie Chestnut, and I'm an engineer, and y'all are in luck. I'm the engineer that did the Ralph Chase building and built the building, so I know a lot about the HVAC in this building. And I'm glad that we're finally replacing the units. They are, if those are the original ones we did back in 98, for lots of reasons. The building I go into quite frequently, number one, because I like it and it's, I have business there. One of the questions I have, is I've heard you talk about how this project has come about, when you talk about specking the units and specking out what you need, one of the things that has changed in this facility is the offices and all have moved spaces within the spaces. They've built walls in places like in the Railroad Commission and moved things around from my original HVAC design, which has ducts and everything to go certain ways, and those have all changed now. And was that looked at as part of, considering what you need to replace, was the duct work and all of those, was that considered part of it? And the other thing is, back in those days, the insulation and all and the efficiency of the units were quite different, so, and then the maintenance of those facilities once they are put in place. So my question is, is how are you specking those? Because there's lots of changes internally in the building that affect the HVAC other than just the units themselves. And were those included in the specs, and does anybody know that? Because that's important for the long-term health of the building, and that's your job and all, is for us to maintain that for the state.
I don't have the answer to that.
Because we ran that out.
Okay, I don't have the answer to that. I don't know if anyone here today is-
If y'all could find that out, because that's the proper way to do the job as well, because we have made many changes over 20 years internally in those facilities. It's important for the people and their health and safety and all the things that we are supposed to do, is our jobs.
Looks like we have some homework to do here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll be happy to help with that, because that is my expertise.
Thank you, Jackie. Further public comment on Item G? Yes, Larry?
Can we table this until we find additional information?
Well, we're not going to, we're not going to, we're rejecting all bids, and that's what's on the table, and it would seem to me, based off of what's been brought to light today, the appropriate thing would be to take a vote to reject these bids and start over again with the correct specs and information and make sure all the right engineering work that needed to be done was done in accordance with this.
With the specs, that's correct, so. On our end, we just want to make sure that we rebid with the specs properly that we're requesting, make sure that we get that response back.
So we will take a vote following this public comment, unless there's more, so that it's officially rejected, and then we start over on the process again of making sure we give vendors the correct information. Yes, Steve?
Well, Steve Hampton, single district, Larry is my man, anyway. I apologize, having a senior moment here.
Call me Larry.
And I think that does sound, this citizen of San Angelo has gone through all the efforts, and apparently his paperwork is, is in, is good.
Well, I have questions about that, so let's not assume that it's good at this point.
Well, I mean, you haven't said, oh, this is, you haven't said any rejection statement yet, so.
Yeah, there's no assumptions at this point, so go ahead.
Anyway, so I think he needs to be given some consideration for, for his troubles when, if you do have to rebid it, and I don't see exactly why, but I think an official statement needs to be given to him and, and his concerns addressed, and he might even be set at the, in priority because he's already committed so much time and energy to helping the citizens of this, of this town. Thank you. Ma'am?
For, yes, Larry?
My concern is, Mr. Valenswell now has three documents down there. We don't know what's on them.
There's, Larry, the concern that I have, it's, it's really, and I don't fault the gentleman, I think if anything, when it went out, it's really convoluted. There's no mention of, of an acceptance or rejection or anything on there, and I do have certain areas that I've actually marked, marked on there that there's, it's a little bit confusing as far as what the email went out. But again, there's not a rejection or an acceptance in, in the email itself, and that's what I want to discuss with the gentleman as well, once we get past this item, and also with my staff, because it is a little bit confusing. But again, there's no rejection or acceptance on this email.
My concern with the rebid has been explained to me, it's basically out of the bag. Be aware of what these companies are going to bid. So, in the case of Mr. Stewart, it's obvious that's what his bid is, so the other ones got information that could work against Mr. Stewart.
Well, we, basically, we bid this project back out. He'd stated that he's going to bid the same amount. Again, on our end, regardless of what he, he stated, we still want to make sure we bid out, it's based, based on our specs to make sure that we get exactly what we're looking for in the replacement of the HVAC system. We want the HVAC system to last as long as possible, and again, these specs for us are important, so I want to make sure that when we rebid it, regardless of what he stated, what he was going to bid, I would recommend for him to take a look at that and see what that bid's going to look like. But on our end, we just want to make sure that we get the best equipment, the specs done the way that we're looking for in order to make sure that we have a lasting system.
And it might also give him, if the specs are different, it also might mean additional costs, which he would want to put into his new bid, so if-
That's true.
-if there's enough difference between the specs that were originally given and the engineering work originally done versus new specs and reevaluation of the engineering, you probably wouldn't put the exact same bid in if, in fact, there's a big enough difference. I don't know that. I don't know anyone on this council knows that at this point, but we've got to make sure we get the right product. Number one.
If I could just add, Mayor, with everything y'all said, but at the end of the day, the staff is not saying, we, we did not put the specs out properly, so that's, that falls on us to, but because we did that does not mean that, that we shouldn't try to make sure we get the right product for the building, so that's what we're- So that's what we're asking, is for us to relook at those as far as cleaning those specs up to make sure they're exactly what needs to go in, so that we don't put a product in that's not what we need at the end of the day. And yes, as we change those, it will probably affect their bids as to what they actually bid on the product.
Well, the reality is, this is February, and if we're going to get the contract awarded and get the product installed, summer's coming soon. So we're not exactly at a lot of time here. So we'll just ask that we get this done as soon as possible so that we don't go into summer with HVAC systems not working. So whatever the timeframe is, let's do it ASAP, get it right.
Will do, ma'am.
Okay, so may I have a motion on item G to reject? And it's, and I think one of the issues is the way this is written. It says to reject all bids, assuming that when you read that, you almost assume that there's a problem with the bids. The language on this should be a little different in that we're not rejecting the bids because we don't accept what the bid amounts were. We're rejecting the bids because we provided the wrong information to the people who were making the bids. So it's kind of an issue with wording, but the wording is, we provided the wrong information for the people who needed to put these bids in. So we need to reject existing ones because they don't meet specs. May I have that motion? There is a motion and a second. Oh, yeah, because we have public comments. So then let's take a vote. All those in favor rejecting, yes, yes, sir.
I think I need to recuse myself on this.
If you recuse yourself, then we can't take a vote, because we won't have quorum.
We have four, ma'am.
No.
No, there'd just be three people.
There'd be, that'd be four people voting. That's not a quorum for us. Five is a quorum.
Teresa?
If he chooses to recuse himself, he has that right to do so. He disclosed he has a personal relationship that causes him personal conflict, but there's no financial conflict. But it is his right to recuse himself if he chooses.
Can we still take a vote, Teresa?
You do not have enough people to talk about.
So this pushes this out further already. As the mayor said, we're under somewhat of a timeframe, because summer will be here before we know it. So if we can't do it this time, we'll have to see if we can reject it next time, which means that we're 30 days further out before we get the new bids in. Now we're into the first of April.
That is correct. And we will have to bring it back for rejection of the bids or award of the bids if something happens in the meantime. But yes, it will need to come back to another meeting to reject, and then we would have to rebid it.
All right, with that said, obviously, we're not going to take a vote, because Larry has recused himself, so we don't have a quorum. So at this point in time, item G has not been rejected or approved. Move on to the regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is an update on Altech's irrigation and supply LLC splash pad fundraising and direction from city council regarding the project. Carl, you're on.
A quick background on this item. Back a year ago, city council adopted a resolution that authorized Altechs to fundraise for two splash pads for the city at two different parks. At that time in the resolution, the overall budget for the two splash pads was $850,000, with the first one being just under $400,000. Altechs has raised the funds to do the first splash pad, which would be at Unidad Park. And so at this point, we are asking city council for concurrence to move forward to implement this first splash pad. If so, this project would begin in April, and expected completion would be by early June. The resolution also authorizes the city manager to negotiate and execute any agreements related to this. We would likely have an agreement with the San Angelo Area Foundation, similar to what we've done with barracks three and four at Fort Concho to implement that project. A quick look at the location for the first splash pad, which would be at Unidad College Hills Park on the east end of the playground area. Some renderings at different angles of what this first splash pad would look like. It has different spray elements coming out of the ground, through different play elements at different heights for all ages of children and abilities. Again, this would be a recirculating system. Water would come in, it would get filtered, go through the spray elements, and return back for purification. And as a reminder, since this first one is funded, we expressed at the time that the resolution was adopted that we would need to hire a technician to be able to inspect and operate and maintain the splash pads and the city pool. So we would like to hire this technician. The good news is, we already have the FTE available. We don't have to create a new FTE, because the coordinator position for the nature center, we could use that FTE. But we would need the funds for the position. The overall cost for the salary and the benefits would be $63,300 annually. For the remainder of this fiscal year, beginning April 1, would be $31,650. We would like to bring them on in April, so they can get ready, go through orientation, make sure they have all the right certifications and training, and become familiar with the pool, and get it ready for the season, and then come in and start maintaining, operating, inspecting the splash pad and the pool. Cost for operations for this year with the one splash pad is $20,000. So the total cost for this year would be $51,650. Altechs is here. If you have any questions about the fundraising efforts, I think Matt Lewis is also here. He's been holding the funds to implement this project. And if you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
I've got questions on this information. All right, so you said that the FTE is approved, so you have a body budgeted.
We have the FTE, but it's not budgeted. It's the coordinator position from the nature center. So when we zeroed out those accounts for the nature center, it's not budgeted, but the FTE is there. We don't have to add another FTE to the city workforce.
How do you budget for an FTE and don't have money for the person?
It stays on the books. It just doesn't get budgeted to hire someone.
I need an explanation of that. That doesn't make sense.
Mayor, we control position growth in two fashions. One is, we control dollars through your approval of the budget. And also, Tina, am I stepping on your toes? All right. We also specify in the budget the total number of FTEs or full-time equivalents, which are authorized by council. So there are two control mechanisms to restrict the growth that might otherwise occur in total number of positions and the dollars associated with those positions. So Carl's saying that one of the mechanisms has capacity to facilitate this. He's saying he needs the other mechanism, the dollar side. He needs the funding. Does that make sense?
Little bit, not a lot, but a little bit. So then the other question would be the following. So the swimming, we have a person who oversees the swimming pool, the municipal pool.
Yes.
And that person does that for a window of time, because that pool's not open 12 months a year, correct?
Yes, and it's existing staff that does that.
It's a part-time position. The pool manager is a part-time position.
Yes, a seasonal for the pool, but also existing recreation staff.
Help out.
Yes.
So the splash pad requirement for a person, what's the timeframe needed for that person? Because the swimming pool's only X amount of months. The splash pad needs for personnel is what timeframe?
Carl, can I talk a little bit on that? The timeframe is not, while there is a seasonal time when the pool and splash pad are running for, you know, the kids to play in, the maintenance part of the pool never goes away. The maintenance part of the splash pad never goes away. So you still have water in that system. You have to clean the slides, you have to, there's all these things that go with it. So what we brought to council was that with the pool, first off, we were tasking staff, like, to go up there and do it, who didn't have time to do that. We have one seasonal person who helps run it, but then our director, other people were having to go shock it, do all these kind of things, which is not what they are trained in or they have time to do. Because of adding to that capacity and the needs to make sure that it operates safely, all the requirements are being met about the water and the safety of those things, yet getting it prepped for the upcoming year, once you add another system to that, a part-time position was no longer going to be able to handle that. So that's why then the need for a full-time person to do that, because it exceeds a part-time capability.
So what we have currently is a part-time person that we want to expand to a full-time person.
Yes, that's another way to look at it, yes.
So it's not a new FTE. It is taking a part-time person, turn it into a full-time person.
Correct. It's taking a part-time job, turning it into a full-time job.
We all agree on that?
Well, it's a seasonal position.
Okay, but...
The other clarification about that is, there is the operation of the pool. The seasonal position that manages the lifeguards, all that kind of stuff, is going to stay as it is. That person had more responsibilities than just doing that. So now you're adding on to that the safety component of a splash pad, which we've all talked about being of concern, that it has to operate correctly. So this full-time position would be to manage the water quality, the maintenance of the pool, keep the pumps running, keep the filters clean, all of that component. You'll still have the seasonal position that just manages the operation of the pool, meaning hires all the lifeguards, gets them going, trained, make sure they're there. If they don't show up, fills the gap for that, all of those kind of things.
So we have 1.5 people?
Correct. You still have the half position. I was, yes.
Okay, so the full-time person we have two, right? Because they currently oversee the pool, but then in off-season, do something else?
The full-time person will be maintaining and prepping the pool and the splash pad for the upcoming. So all the maintenance that has to be done when you're in the off-season, getting that done. Now, I will say this, if there's, for some reason, downtime, they've got plenty of stuff over there that they can do from a recreational standpoint. So helping out with whatever programs we've got running at the time if, for some reason, the pool is not needing it.
Well, I do not question the need for making sure this person really oversees the splash pad, because any issues that have happened in other communities, we don't want to have happen here. So we know the importance of this technical person overseeing the splash pads is correct. So then the question mark becomes, where do we find the money to do this? So what is, what are we talking about, and where are the funds to fund the necessary people and chemicals, utilities, et cetera, that will come along with a splash pad? Because we knew there were going to be some.
Yes, ma'am. Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. We'll work with Carl and his group to find a funding source for this during the current fiscal year. Likely, it will be cost savings somewhere else in his budget that we would use to fund this cost for the remainder of the fiscal year, and then we'll build it into next year's budget from the beginning of the year.
Because I don't want to not have a plan for this project from maintenance, technical aspects, as we get ready to open it. It's obviously a big citizen's request to have splash pads. We are thrilled that Altechs has stepped up and dedicated funds and efforts to this project. So we're thrilled with that private-public partnership and the community who's contributed to this project. It's great. Now we need to do our part to ensure the safety and the efficient running of this splash pad.
Yes, ma'am. We'll work with Carl, make sure that we get that funded appropriately.
Okay, further questions from council?
I have a question for Carl. Now, I know that the swimming pool has to be maintained all year round, but do you winterize the splash pad?
We do turn the system off. We do have to check it from time to time and make sure it's safe. Have to inspect it, make sure there's not any hazards that are left on the site that kids could stumble upon. We do have to check it.
Carl, do you want to talk about any of those maintenance items that you, when you went to Abilene? You know, they have things that they have to do at the end of the season to prep it for the winterizing it and then prepping it back? I mean, there's a lot of general stuff. Do you want to talk about that? Just leave it at that.
Well, it doesn't look like by his face he wants to. The table, the questions on the table, so you're going to have to.
As I understood it, when we went and toured some of these, specifically in Abilene, I think they've got three or four or something.
They have five now.
Really, at the end of the season, there's various things from, whether you have valves or you have fittings or things that may be loose, things that need prepping as far as maintenance, just so that you avoid having downtimes when you're in the season. So that is just an important aspect that they'll go through as far as taking and cleaning out the water-holding containers to make sure all that's clean for the upcoming year. So it takes a little while to get all that done, especially with just one person, so...
What is the timeframe that a splash pad operates? Because we have really good weather through September, October, unlike the swimming pool thing, which we end on Labor Day weekend, so...
Yes, definitely. We could have an extended season. So when it starts to become consistently warm, we could run it during the weekends, during a set amount of time. Good thing with these is you can program such that, they have a turn-on switch. The kids could walk up and turn them on, as long as it's set to operate during that time period. So we could set it for the weekends during, when the warm season starts, late April, early May.
Do we not have control over that on and off? Because I would assume we need some sort of security control on that.
Yeah, the on-off switch is just for the season when it's operating, so that it doesn't run all day long if nobody's there. So you can turn it on, it runs, and then it shuts down when no kids are there. But yes, when the season's over, we shut that switch off.
Right. It will have a program where it's set where it can only operate if somebody walks up to turn it on. And so we could extend that into probably the end of September during the weekends. I don't think we'd necessarily want to run it during the week while school's in session, but definitely the weekends.
Okay, further questions from council? All right, so with that, this was just an update on the splash pads. So are there, do we need to take any action today? I mean, we have to, the action I know that we have to take is to find the funding. So that's a number-one issue, is finding the funding.
It's a direction item.
Which I think we've given direction on right now. But we have Altechs who would like to offer some comments, so please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Alicia Olshansky. I'm one of the committee members for the splash pad. Wanted to come before city council this morning and provide an update with our fundraising efforts. As Carl had mentioned, we have raised the funds to proceed forward with Unidad Park. Our efforts are now going into raising the funds needed to complete Kirby Park. One way in which we would like to do that is to be able to utilize funds provided through the Development Corporation. Last summer, we were approached by several current and past board members of the Development Corporation, who educated us on our project's eligibility for funds through the organization, and who also encouraged us to apply for assistance. In October, we were able to present our project and give them our progress thus far, as well as the requirements still needed to complete the project in its entirety. While we do intend to approach them for an official funding request, we do understand the significance of acknowledging that these funds are sourced from the half-sent sales tax. Therefore, we do recognize the necessity of presenting this proposition to the council as it directly pertains to taxpayer funds.
All right, so my question here is the following. So COSA DC generally approves, projects come to COSA DC, they approve them, then it comes to city council for approval. So we haven't had that brought forward to city council for approval yet. So as we discussed this this morning, tell us what we need to do, because we don't vote on conversations like this without direction from COSA DC. So I need to understand what we need to do. So I need to understand what we need to do here.
I think you just take it as a comment for today and let the process move forward with COSA DC, if that's where they're going to go for funding.
Mayor, we did, we do have board members who see this project positively and were advocates for consideration for funding. And as we discussed it, our interpretation of council's direction was that the fundraising should occur without the use of public funds, and that the council would commit to operational activities and funding, but not to use public funds for construction. On that basis, the board held back in considering an action item for funding pending council's allowance that that public money could be considered for funding. In other words, the board is holding out of respect for what, what we interpret council's ruling was, that public funds should not be part of this. And if you lift that restriction, I think we have a board member who will be an advocate to put it back on the agenda and consider for funding. So this is, this whole conversation is about that board having respect for council's direction for no public funding at this time.
So the question mark, Teresa, from a legal perspective, is the following, because we don't generally create the request for COSA DC. COSA DC comes to us after they, as a board, have made a decision about a project and funding. The decision by COSA DC is separate from the City of San Angelo's budgeting.
That's correct.
So I'm not sure that we have to alter what we have said, because it's want, separate from COSA DC. If COSA DC wants to fund it, it comes to city council, and city council supports or rejects that request. I don't see why we have to, as a city council today, make a statement about using city funds. We're not using quote, "city funds." We're asking COSA, COSA DC is saying, "We like this project. We think it is a valid project. We would like monies to go towards it." That's their decision. It then comes to us for a decision. So I don't think we have to change anything we've said. They have the right to say, "This fits into the categories of projects that we like, we support, and we would like council's consideration." I think that's all we have to do. But I don't, I'm not legal.
Yeah, we can't take a vote on whether or not you would approve that money, but I think they're looking for direction on whether or not it's an appropriate funding source for us to consider.
Correct, too. Our intention this morning, as to reiterate what Michael Dane was saying, was that it was more so, after we did our presentation to Development Corporation, it was brought to our attention the past comments that were made, being tax dollars being used towards the splash pads, and how our request to Development Corporation could interfere with that comment. And today, we really just want to come before council and say that our intent to go to them was pure and for the purpose of receiving it as a grant.
I don't, I don't want to set a precedent of this council saying, "Yes, we want to fund this. Now COSA DC, you get it done."
Mayor, to your, to your point, let me say what you said in a little different way. There is a process through which we, we already have established, if somebody wants to see if funds are available from COSA DC, they go to COSA DC, they make the presentation, then it comes to council. And then, to your point, we get to vote it up or down. Let's just follow the process. If they want to go to COSA DC, that's their privilege and their right. And then if, if, if we like the project and it comes to us, because it's voted out by COSA DC, then we take a look at it ourselves. So my thought is, really, again, to your point, let's just follow the process.
All right. We needed to make sure that we funded the funds, or found a way to fund it once it's operational, and that there will be no hiccups, because we don't want to delay making sure we do all the technical maintenance aspects, and that we have a person ready to be trained and ready for the day we want to flip the switch and operate it. So we've done the part we need to do as a city council. Now COSA DC needs to do their part, and then it will come to us for a final consideration. Because I don't want to set a precedent of coming, someone coming to council and say, "You need to tell COSA DC what to do." No, that's not what we do.
Correct.
COSA DC is a separate board with the right to ask you to present and to consider, and we will then react accordingly.
All right. We appreciate it.
Harry.
Thank you, Mayor. When we first talked about this a year ago, we talked about public-private partnerships. And I think that's the key to this. Now, I don't disagree with the fact is that if COSA DC decides they want to do it and they bring it to the council, bottom line, from my perspective, you're still using taxpayers' money. So we were looking, when we first looked at this, we were looking for private donations to get us to the spot where the city would commit then to operate this thing while we're going to do that. Now, from my perspective, I think this is a great, great opportunity, but I'm not sure whether or not we should be using taxpayers' money for. That's my personal thought.
We know that when the half-sent sales tax was created, part of the projects listed in that vote by the citizens was community projects, community projects. And I think this is a community project, which fits back into the COSA DC line of, if we think it's a community project, yes, it is taxpayer money, but the taxpayers already approved the use of the half-sent sales tax fund to be created and to fund and pay for community projects. So it fits. The COSA DC's got to bring it to us. We can't take it to them.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
All right. We appreciate it.
Perfect. Thank you. Jackie.
It's hard to be the engineer, because you always bring reality in. I'd like to speak to splash pads, please. In a city, again, that is focused on being a retirement community, one thing, in a city that is definitely water short, in a city that has already got huge problems with sewer and water, in a city that cannot maintain the facilities we've got, and I brought a bunch of pictures, but we couldn't get them up, of the park facilities that we have, the community.
This is specifically the splash pad conversation?
Yes, ma'am. Community facilities that we have, and then in our area. But my question is, and my concern is, we're now going to put something else on city property, paid for possibly by taxes, and then private donations as well, but then put on the city to maintain that with my tax dollars? I'm, I am concerned about that. A limited operation, you have to shut it down, bring it back up. Again, I'm an engineer, I run a ranch, I have to deal with all these issues on my place all the time, and you're going to put all this into the city and onto the city, in a city that already has limited funds, has many, 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 many more issues. And I would say there are better things for our community, funds of half-sent sales tax, and also that would reach a larger group. This is a very limited group of people that we use a splash pad, certainly not us elderly, and certainly not anybody else that's in any way handicapped or anything else, these are going to be. And it, plus, it presents lots of insurance issues and liability issues, just like the skate park that they're looking at adding in a couple of parks here. I have great concerns about this. You're adding big risks to the, to the city, and you already can't maintain what you've got. So think about these things as you go forward, and especially our water.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Steve Hampton, single member District Six. Got it right this time.
His name is Larry.
And Larry's man, still, still Larry. And I was on the, the Park and Recreation Board for several years, and this came up frequently, and, and even when we did a poll on desire, it was, it was right at the top. And I think, I think it's a wonderful idea. I think it is very worthwhile, and very community, community oriented, and, and want, wish to have it. But there are two different kinds, two different kinds of systems. One is connected directly to the water system of the city, and the other is a private recycle thing. And I was not for the recycle deal, and, and this is the very reason why, because there's a continuing expensive cost that, that the city has to carry. The other is just the water, and it can be turned off. But it goes back into the system, is recycled downtown, or in the, in the, with the rest of it. So maybe in fundraising, you should reconsider the type of system you chose. If you have not entered in any contracts or anything, it can still be done. I think in the long, in the long reach, it will, it will be much cheaper. Thank you.
Further public comment?
Mayor, I'd like to add something real quick. First of all, this is a celebration. We look at Altech's irrigation supply and the work that they've done. It's, it's incredible. Thank you guys for doing that. That's $385,000 to create that, that first splash pad, which this community has told us we wanted. And so I don't want to lose on all this conversation that we're having, the fact that you guys have really gone out there and done what you said you're going to do to raise those monies for that first splash pad. So again, this should be celebrated, and I just want to say thank you for the work that you put in, Altech, and, and congratulations for getting this portion of it done.
To Steve Hampton's point, when we did the master plan for the parks, splash pads was one of the top items on that master plan, that the citizens who replied to that project, or to giving us information for what they wanted in parks, that was a key issue. The city does not have the funds to create that. The fact that a private business, Altech, stepped up and said, "We think we have a way forward. We'll be happy to partner with the citizens in making this project happen." They've done their part. Today, we're doing our part, providing the funding for the chemicals, the utilities, the maintenance personnel required. So I think everyone's done their part of making this project happen. I'm sure that we have done the research needed to be done to decide which system is the best system based off of our quality of water that needs to be done. I'm sure Altech, who does a lot of projects in this city, knows which splash pad will be the best splash pad for this city based off of our water, quality of water, et cetera. So again, I think we should celebrate where we're at at this point in time, and let's keep moving this project forward.
Thank you, Altech. Appreciate you.
Okay, so that concludes item A, and we will move into item B. Consider a resolution of support for proposed development by the Overland Property Group for senior affordable rental housing at 3,800 Green Meadow Drive, named the residence at Green Meadow, as part of the 2024 Annual Low-Income Housing Tax Credit. That is LIHTC Affordable Housing Program. And the presentation will be made by, is April here today? No, so Bob, I think you are on.
Good morning, council. We have Ms. April Ingstrom here, from the Overland Property Group, to provide information on a tax credit project that's competing for 2024 tax credit projects. It's a, to construct affordable housing for seniors, named the residence at Green Meadow, and they are requesting a resolution of support. April?
Good morning, council. Mayor, city manager. My name is April. I'm with Overland Property Group. Before I get into this project, I just want to provide a quick update on Roosevelt Lofts. First of all, again, thank you so much for your support last year with that deal. Things have been moving along really nicely. You know, with any historic building, there are a lot of approvals that you have to go through, and a lot of, you know, engineering studies you have to go through. So we've just been plugging along, and we hope to start construction in the middle of March, so next month. Our team, our contractors, are going to be there on the 15th. They're going to install a "coming soon" sign, so everyone knows that things are moving. And they're also, they're also going to be there to be doing like a pre-bid walkthrough with subcontractors. So yeah, the ball's rolling on that one. So about this development, this would be called the Residence at Green Meadow, and it's located at approximately 3,800 Green Meadow Boulevard. I think you guys are familiar with our firm, so I don't want to spend too much time, but Overland Property Group has been developing affordable multifamily housing since 2002 across the Midwest, Colorado, Texas. But we currently have our largest footprint in Texas. And we've won some awards for our work. Here are just a couple snapshots of our Texas properties. So about this development, it's 1.4 acres, and it's currently in a residential, like multifamily neighborhood. So I actually really like this site. So when the state tells us what's competitive and what's not, oftentimes, they lead you to places that don't necessarily make sense for housing. One time, the only site that I had that scored was a giant detention pond, for example. So when I drove the site, I was actually pretty excited, because it is, I mean, I think another affordable, or, sorry, an affordable development would fit really nicely here with the fabric of the neighborhood. And we'll be doing about 30 units, so 15 one bedrooms and 15 two bedrooms. So it would be really, like a nice, we call it boutique or neighborhood-sized development. And then also, too, we have, you know, we'll have our general amenities, so clubhouse. You know, we oftentimes do like an activity center, a library. I always really like to make sure that we do dog parks when we can. And we're going to have, like I said, one and two-bedroom units between 30% and 60% of the area median income for rents between $392 and $1,000. The other thing I like about this site is that it's really centrally located, so you have kind of everything you need within a close proximity. Just highlighted here for reference. And then just some of our standard development amenities. You may have not seen this with Roosevelt Lofts, because it was a historic rehab, but for our new communities, we always have 30% stone or masonry. We always try to have like a nice park-like recreational space. We always have onsite management, so someone's always there, and onsite maintenance man. We have monthly classes, whether that's, you know, cooking classes, fitness, fitness classes, 30-year roofs. So these things are really built to a high standard. And then our unit amenities, we do LED lighting, energy-star rated appliances, LVT floors. Yeah. So at the end of the day, I'm here to ask for a resolution of support from the city council, which would allow us to then go to the next step and continue to compete for these housing tax credits.
I think it's exciting that it's a brand-new development. We certainly have a need for affordable senior living, so I think it hits a part of our segment of our community that is looking for this type of a project. So I'm excited about the potential of a brand-new development for senior living. So I'm going to go over here, and I'm going to start with Larry, and see what questions or comments he has.
I wondered if you're anticipating having like a shuttle bus service?
You know, that's a good question. I will write it down.
Because McDonald's is just down the street a little ways, and it's also a beauty parlor, massage facility right next to it. But other than that, things are a bit of a distance.
You know, I know that we have done those in the past, or partnered with cities or municipalities in the past to provide a service like that. I just didn't want to say like, absolutely yes, but that's definitely something that we can look into and not without, or not outside of the realm of possibility.
We do have a transit system that is an on-call system that says the following, if you call and you need to go to the doctor's office from that facility, you arrange that, or if you need to go wherever, it can be arranged. So whether it's there 24/7 or not, there's definitely a transit system today. It's the reason they bought smaller vans versus buses to accommodate the on-call transportation needs of this city.
Thank you.
I don't know that includes McDonald's as an on-call need, but we all know it should if it didn't.
I will lobby for that.
Other questions, comments?
The other side of the street, is that a single-family dwellings or duplex?
You know, I'd have to go back and look. I saw a lot of duplexes. I saw a lot of duplexes, or like townhomes sort of with garages, a couple stories. I see a lot of single-family homes around the area.
I think those right across the street, right across Green Meadow are in fact duplexes. And then it transitions back into the neighborhood. I think this would be a good transition.
Yeah. It works well.
It does. Yeah, I drove over there and looked at it.
Karen? Yes, ma'am, thank you. I just want to publicly thank April and the Overland Property Group for their inclusion of green space, a parkland-like area, I think is how you described it in your programming. We appreciate that so much, and I'd like to see that trend continue, that you consider the amenities that people so often ask us for, providing outdoor space for people, animals, and so forth. So it creates a neighborhood feel, and I think it's great.
Yeah, well, thank you for saying so. You know, I lived in apartments growing up, like in a low-income family, and for me, with this job, it's like I don't want to just build apartments. I want to build communities and things that feel more neighborhood-like. So thanks, thanks for saying so.
Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tommy, any further?
No, ma'am.
Then may I have a motion? What?
What kind of fencing, walling do you have in mind?
So we typically don't have anything planned. Our plans are very schematic at this point, very preliminary. That comes down to, you know, what the city process and requirements look like and the zoning or PD requirements look like when we start working with Erin and the team. But, you know, we don't do anything without the city's approval. And without following the city's requirements, we couldn't physically, even if we wanted to. So that's definitely something we could discuss.
I didn't see pickleball courts out there.
Pickle... RINs in all caps.
If there's pickleball courts, I want Larry to be the first one on the new court.
Okay, okay. Noted. You can be the captain, team captain, if they have captains, I don't know.
Any further questions? Or may I have a motion for approval of the resolution?
Motion.
Thank you, Larry, seconded by Karen. Public comment?
Hello. I love this project.
You have to state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jackie Chestnut. I'm a local engineer and rancher, and one of my things that I do as an engineer, as well as I design assisted living facilities. And I love this because we need these for our elderly, because we are the majority of the population now. We pour old people that are fading by the day. Question I have, I assume everything is ADA compliant, and I want to mention this because this is most forward in everything I do. Did we tell people and start making people aware that these senior facilities are ADA compliant and everything? Bathrooms, all that. So, and let's talk about that. That's important for all of us. I've been through 27 surgeries in the middle of cancer and everything else, so we need, we all need to make this open. And then security. Do y'all have security in the buildings? Is that part of it as well?
We typically don't have onsite security, but you know, oftentimes we'll have cameras. We have the...
You guys, I'm, the council's right here. You've got to speak to us.
Yes. So that was my question is, yes, do we have, and just a general question for these kind of facilities, do y'all have that as well?
Ms. Chestnut, you're welcome to have a conversation with her outside of the council meeting if you're interested.
She started answering my question, so I was just asking...
This is your time to provide comment to the council.
Okay, so that was my question. So, very specific in how y'all want me to do this, I know. So, yes, so those are just questions I have. There's security in it and those kind of things for addressing, because we're becoming more and more a nation, especially as elderly. This is a problem for us, needing security, so thank you.
Further questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate your time.
Thanks, April.
Item C, consider approving an agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated as part of an RFQ OP 04-23 Safety Action Plan and ADA Transition Plan update for the amount of $650,000, utilizing the solid waste fund balance and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents.
All right. Good morning, Mayor and Council. This is pretty straightforward. Y'all first saw this back, well, several months, several times already, but most recently in October of 2023, when y'all authorized us to negotiate with Kim Lee Horn on a scope and a fee related to an update to our current ADA transition plan, as well as formulating a safety action plan in conjunction with a Safe Streets For All grant that the city was awarded. So what we're doing is we're coming back to you today just to allocate funding for the creation of those two plans, or the creation of the one plan and the update of the transition plan. So that's why it's on regular, because we are pulling this from fund balance. It's a total of $650,000 of city funds. 550 of that is the update to the transition plan, and $100,000 is for the local match portion of the safety action plan.
Okay, so my question would be the following. It sounds like an odd area, the solid waste fund balance to fund this, but maybe I don't fully understand what this transition plan update is about.
Well, and it is, and the reason we're doing that is because this is a, we're required to do this. We currently are being looked at by the FHWA, and part of our voluntary compliance with that is an update to this plan. It was a portion where we have funding available currently. At the time, we do have an obligation for that fund balance in the future, but it's not going to impact that fund the way it would impact the general fund or the civic events fund or any of those other funds that would be going into the transition plan at this point. So we, as staff, were comfortable utilizing these funds in the solid waste fund to do this as a city-wide purpose. The transition plan does affect every citizen in San Angelo. The solid waste fund is a fund that is contributed to by the entirety of the city. So there is a transit, you know, a relationship there.
Describe what transition plan is.
A transition plan is basically, it looks, and Teresa may want to jump in here, she does the ADA coordinator, but I'll attempt it. It looks at our ADA compliance currently with the city and what the state of that is. And then it goes through, and it gives us recommendations on how to bring those deficiencies up into compliance. And it looks at everything from our facilities to our right-of-way improvements to our programs and services as a city as a whole, and it makes sure that it's ADA compliant. Thank you.
Okay. So I want to make sure, okay, you mentioned that the $650,000 coming from the solid waste fund balance, but it won't impact a project down the line that we already had obligated these funds to do. Is that what you said?
That is correct. We, as staff...
So how are we sure of that?
So we've looked at, and as we developed the land, or the concept for the new landfill expansion or the new landfill green space, we've looked at those funds with our consultant. We looked at our fund balance, our future revenues that are coming into that account, and we're comfortable utilizing this money and not impacting that future. So working with our consultants, we're confident that we'll be able to accommodate that without a burden on the city when it comes down to permitting that landfill.
Okay, so Council, do you have questions for Patrick? Or comments? All right. So with that, then, I will need a motion to approve item C.
Move to approve as presented.
And Harry made the motion, seconded by Larry. Public comment, please. Seeing none, hearing none, we will take a vote on item C. All those in favor of approving item C, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Item D, first reading of public hearing of an ordinance designating reinvestment zone number 24-1 to be located at Lot 1, Block 2, Section 3, Southwest Plaza Edition, also known as 2702 West Loop 306. Michael, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Michael Dane, Interim Economic Development Director. Our purpose for this item is to create a reinvestment zone. The reason we want to do that is we have talked to Council. Council will contemplate at a future meeting the approval of a tax abatement agreement. In order to do that, in accordance with our ordinance, we have to, that abatement has to be on a property located in a council-designated reinvestment zone. So the first thing we do is create the zone. The next thing we do is we come back to Council with a proposed tax abatement agreement. So today's item is just about, is the first reading to create the zone. In order to execute control, we, our philosophy has been to create zones only for the property we anticipate abating. In other words, not the whole neighborhood, just the property that we expect to contract for abatement on. So this zone is for the location of the former Seitel Building at 2702 West Loop 306. The owners plan to invest $3.4 million in addition to the purchase of the facility. That amount will fluctuate. They're fighting inflation like everybody else who's building these days, so I know they're struggling to keep it down. The value of their abatement at this point is anticipated to be 60% of the net increase in taxable value. So if they spend, have to spend more, the value of the abatement will go up, and our tax revenue will go up. If they spend less, the value of their abatement comes down. Our tax revenue will be less than the estimates, but will still go up because they will, we'll be receiving for the first seven years taxes on 40% of that increased value.
What is the timeframe for the spending of that capital investment?
They have already started construction. The agreement we anticipate will extend no farther than five years beyond completion of construction, but we're anticipating a seven-year agreement to give them time to execute construction, move in and get things going, and for that value to show up on the appraisal district tax rolls. Recall that they do that with a January 1st as-of date.
Do we have a map of this site?
We do have, we do have more slides. Great question. The proposed zone is what we would see as the parking lot that contains the building. Rendering of what they anticipate it to look like upon completion. We kind of hit the highlights, value at the assumed investment amounts. We won't know that until they're through, and actually, until it shows up on the tax rolls, that's the real deal. They may invest $19 million, but if the taxable value only goes up 3.4, that's what is the contract abates. So based on a $3.4 million assumption and some declining value for equipment, we anticipate the abatement to be approximately $64,000. They'll pay an additional, on those assumptions, they'll pay an additional $43,000 in taxes than we receive on the property now, over that seven years. Net 10-year benefit, this assumes things like increased sales tax, economic impact of positions and activity in the area, business activity. City benefit anticipated, this is our economic development software talking, $317,000. If you include the other taxing authorities, the county and the school district, $552,000. We anticipate at these assumptions, a payback period is 7.7 years.
The community benefit is what?
Economic benefit.
Well, yeah, describe what that is. The wording is nice, "community benefit," but what is that?
This item is actually about the creation of the reinvestment zone, and I'm assuming the abatement with more detail will be coming forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so keep it, don't go too much in-depth into the discussion about the abatement because it's not being discussed.
Yes, ma'am. The economic benefit includes other tax streams, such as sales tax, and the estimated impact of the jobs being in the area.
But we're not discussing that today. We're just discussing those boundaries.
I strayed and was brought back onto the straight and narrow.
Yes, on the straight and narrow. Go back to that slide that shows the actual border of this reinvestment zone.
That's the key, is creating the reinvestment zone where we anticipate the creation of a, an approval of an abatement contract.
Okay, so put that slide back up.
That one?
The one that shows the boundaries. That's what we're talking about today, are the boundaries of that reinvestment zone.
There we go.
So that, what we are approving today is the hard, black, bold lines in terms of this reinvestment zone. So it's very specific to this project and this project only.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have questions from Council on this slide? Or this creation of this reinvestment zone? I see no further. Now, Larry, you always wait till I'm ready to move on, and then you raise your hand, so do it now.
No, ma'am, I have no questions.
Don't bring it up.
Speak now or forever hold your peace.
All right, with that, so...
Move approval as presented, ma'am.
Thanks, Tommy, second.
Harry.
By Harry.
Michael Looney, VP of Economic Development for the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce, just wanted to quickly add that the Chamber of Commerce and Co-CDC have partnered on working with Snyder IT and with VGI. This project, what it does is it reinstates a building that has been obviously abandoned by a contact center, Seitel, repurposes it, gives it a new life. And this also serves as a hub for the attraction and the creation of coalitions of new technology-based companies in San Angelo. So not only will they, these two companies be inhabiting the property, but it will serve as a collecting point for other companies that are in advanced technology and software development and technology services, providing services not just to the immediate city and to the region, but also externally. So we see this as a good move, as one of our strategic plans is to try to assuage more technology and the development of software technologies and software as a service in San Angelo. And it is growing. Several members of our Contra Valley Technology Alliance program, which is similar to our Manufacturers Alliance, have expressed interest in inhabiting the facility as well. And that creates more of an incubator-type feel to the property. So it's not just for these two companies, but there are other companies in similar industries that will also be inhabiting the property over time. And we think pretty rapidly. So thank you very much.
Further public comment? With none, we will now take a vote. All those in favor of approving item D, the border of this reinvestment zone, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Item E is consider approving tax increment reinvestment zone tiers incentive funding for six South Tears private projects totaling $377,462.42. And Erin, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Erin Vanoye, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. This morning, we're going to talk about some recommendations from the tiers board for South Tears Zone funding. I do have six projects in there, so you just decide whether you want to ask questions after each project, or if we want to go through the whole packet and ask questions at the end. But I do have six projects that went to the tiers board, and this is just kind of a summary page, and we'll get into some more details. But you see, 36 East Tuig, 40 West Tuig, 214 South Chadburn, 202 Martin Luther King.
What I would ask is that the addresses are great, but I think we need to understand what the address is.
Yes, ma'am.
So just looking at the numbers and the address doesn't show what the project is.
Yes, ma'am. A little more context is helpful. So 30 East Tuig, that is the Cactus Hotel. 40 West Tuig, that is the Spur Building. 202 Martin Luther King, most people may not notice the building, but it's a little, used to be an old service station that was probably built in the '40s or maybe '50s. There is a landscape company, Joe's Landscaping, that has bought the building and wants to refurbish it, and we'll get into some of those images. 123 North Chadburn, that is the Blue Buffalo Art Gallery. And then 44, 441 Rio Control Drive, that's the Clarion Hotel along the river, just next door to here.
Okay, 214 South Chaburn, you skipped.
Oh, thank you for pointing that out. That is the Plateau Brewing on 214 South Chaburn. Plateau Brewing is that one. So here you can see the request that they made and the amount that is recommended, and we'll get into those just a little more specifically. One of the benefits, and on this slide, I want you to see that that total funding is $377,462.42. We actually had available $979,366. So there is, through the tiers board, they will be asking for a second round of projects to come through this fiscal year. So we still have around $600,000 left in the South Tears fund after, if these projects do get funded today. So let's get into the details. Again, this is the Cactus Hotel. They are matching at $51,800. They are matching at 51,843. The funding request was for 75,000. They are doing facade improvements with the historic preservation of the historic building. They are restoring 18 awnings with metal materials instead of fabric material that did go through the DHRC, and they're replacing the door units with updated framework and an ADA entry system. Some of that information is in your packets. You can see here on the left side are the samples that they provided to DHRC and to our tiers board, and you can see there on the right, some of the current things that, of course, our West Texas Wind from time to time does to fabric awnings. DHRC did like the color and they felt that that was going to be a longer-term solution, and they approved it, and our tiers board also liked the idea.
I thought we'd approved the awnings before.
Do you, I looked back through the tiers board, and I did not find anything that approved awnings. In 2011, they did approve secondary egress for funding in 2011 through the tiers board. I know DHRC did approve this, and they did have some discussion of whether, you know, fabric or metal. I don't recall that coming back to the council for that item, but I'm wondering if there were maybe some discussions about the building when other things were talked about, about just the general maintenance and the, and the look and trying to get them to, to make that a little more appealing.
So there hasn't been previous funding given towards the awning?
Not through the tiers program, no, ma'am. Before I move on from the cactus, from this project, any other questions on the cactus?
And then the, just keep going and then give everybody time to...
Yes, ma'am.
To think through it all.
This again is the Spur Building. This one is actually, their match is 109,000 and the funding request is 75,000. They do have a modernization of an elevator that has not been functioning for many, many years. They're, right now, their only access to second, third floors are stairs, and so this actually fell under one of the new incentive guidelines that the council voted on was for ADA accessibility to the rest of the building. The tiers board looked at that and thought that was a very good project because it does then make those two floors accessible, and it allows them to expand offices up in those areas and have more use of that building.
So the parking lot would be available for only people in the building or, and versus additional parking overall?
That's a good question. I'm not sure exactly how they, if there's a contract with the parking lot or not, but I know that the, the parking was for the building. We didn't really look at that or discuss that on the tiers item.
It probably didn't need to, but Teresa, I think we do need to look at what was the contract on the Spur Building. I don't know, I, I'm a little confused about what our contract was there. That, that being said, I think the elevator's obviously necessary.
So now on to Plateau Brewing at 214 South Chadburn. Their match is 23,355. Their funding request is 56,701. It is for some facade improvement on the front, but particularly for an addition of an outdoor patio space at the back of the, of the property. The outdoor patio space is not front onto Chadburn, it's actually behind the, the structure. So these are a couple of pictures of the back of that structure now. You can see the old stone wall. In fact, Mr. Mazur remembered putting that stone wall in, so it's not as old as the building. And so they're going to remove that stone wall, and this is where the patio is going to be, and you see the brick there, the red brick, that is the back of the existing building right now. So they will have this outdoor patio. It'll be kind of a metal structure that will be wood clad around the back. If you look at this bottom picture here, that is the parking lot that is to the south of 214 South Chadburn. They have that wall that comes down and it kind of jags down. They're not doing anything to the wall, they're keeping it as is, as the way the wall was. They are just adding on this patio that goes around and the, and the cover. So from the public view, you won't be seeing a whole lot of this. This did go through DHRC and did get approval. The only difference in these images right here that you'll see is they've actually recommended a darker color than the lighter would to try to help with some of the fading with the sun, and so that, that is going to be coming forward as well. We think it's a great addition downtown. It will increase the size of their business, and it is designed to be a four-season outdoor space, and so they're very excited about that. 202 Martin Luther King, that is going to be Jost Landscaping. It is going to be facade improvement, landscape installation, and strengthen the visual appeal. It is in the downtown district, not in the historic district. The match that they are doing is 41,340, and they requested 75,000. So here are some pictures of the older building. Now that you see the older building, you probably recognize it if you've gone on MLK in that part of town. It's kind of a unique building that's got kind of a roof that was added after the fact, and even some of those things that are different. What they are going to do is match the building that's to the side of them. You can see this here on the left side, that is the building that they currently occupy and did get tiers funding for, I want to say it was in either 2017 or 2018. They did purchase this building, it's just to the left of this, but you see on the right here, that whole facade is going to change where they're going to have stone at the bottom, they're going to have the wood siding, and then they're going to have the R-panel at the top. They are going to do a, a R-panel that's very similar to this one, that's very soft, it does not have a lot of reflection causing any issues there. Here's their landscape plan. Martin Luther King is at the bottom of your screen, and then West Second Street is to the right. They do plan on landscaping that area, which will actually make that area very nice and a much more inviting. There are some vacant lots in that area, and so hopefully that is an instigation of redevelopment over in that part of Martin Luther King. 123 North Chadburn, this is the Blue Buffalo. Their match is 6,920. Funding request was 20,760. They're doing some minor facade improvement and enhancement of the exterior of the gallery, and they're recreating the original awning. So here on this side, they're going to put this mural that they have come up with designs with and has gotten approved, that will be, as you come down Chadburn heading south, you'll be able to see that on the side of their building.
It's nice.
Kind of a nice welcoming into our historic downtown area. They are, they did get this approved through DHRC. They have done most of the facade, but you can just see there, there's an actual awning that they're going to re-add, that's an original awning for that structure, and so we do like that, them going back to the originality of the structure and adding that awning. And so part of this funding will be for that as well.
Yeah, that building used to be one of the ugliest buildings in, in downtown and looked like it would never come back to life, and to see what has been done to that building is incredible.
Yes.
And to see these new additions, that mural's wonderful. And that really improves that blank wall.
Yes, I think that will, will bring enhancement to that area, and I really like all the traffic that happens around there now. That block's getting more and more traffic, and I like that it's moving up Chadburn as well, so I think that's a great, great thing. So 441 Rio Concho Drive, it's the Clarion Hotel. Their match is 52,835 with a funding request of 75,000. So it is a pure facade improvement. They are going to repaint the exterior of the Clarion Hotel, which is a very big project. Most of us think, oh, repainting's, that's not that big, but it is a very large hotel. Here on the left, you can see what they have. They're going with colors very, very similar, but they are going to be nice and refreshed, and you can see them here on the right side, they did go through the River Corridor approval since they are in the River Corridor, but that is a, a large structure to repaint and got some really great colors there, so I think that's a great improvement for it. With that, I'll bring us back to this slide that has our addresses, our funding request, and our recommended funding amount. The tiers board did recommend unanimously to fund at 100% each one of those projects, so that total came out to 377,462 and 42 cents. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Teresa, I have one question on 441 Rio Concho Drive. It's not necessarily specific to this funding, but there was at one point a large conversation in city council before all of us were up here about that covered walkway from the Clarion Hotel to our convention center.
That goes underneath the railroad?
Yes.
Yes.
Was the cit, would you at some point bring that update to us on, because again, it was before this council, to remind us of what that conversation was? Because this is our convention hotel, if you will, and that covered parking was an important element connecting it to McNeese, and I'd like to better understand what was said and approved and done during that council member council meeting relative to this facility.
We will find out. I also was able, Sarah sent me the agreement with the Spur Garage. They contributed 1.7 million dollars to reconstruct the garage for their, their use of them and their tenants. So there's no public requirement, they provide just general public parking.
Teresa, I can give a general answer to the mayor's question a while ago if you want me to, or do you want that as a separate item to come back?
Just, well, let's bring it back. Yeah, that's better.
Okay, and then typically, because there was funding, obviously, the, the funding requests were approved, although the matching requests were less than the funding amount because funds were available. Is that correct?
That's correct, and the, the matching funds had to be at least 25% of the project, and some of these are significantly over 25%, but they're all at least 25% match.
So that's the standard that is used, at least?
Yes, ma'am.
That number. Okay, Larry, do you have questions?
Yes, I had a previous conversation with Mr. Vanoye concerning ADA on the Cactus Hotel, and you settled my question about that, but I wondered about all the other projects because oftentimes those older buildings have hurdles for people with mobility problems to tackle. curb steps up to the building and so on, and I, I would hope that there's some investigation done before, you know, we let this money out to them, to make sure that it is feasible to have them ADA.
Yes, any of the projects that will require building permits, they will be looking at that as part of the permit and the site plan process. So for example, the Plateau Brewing, they've already discussed of how to make sure that they, they can get all the way through the building and out to the back patio and be able to circularate around the back patio, as well as egress out of the patio if there's an emergency, and how they can get out and where to go. So they are improving most of that concrete in the back so that they do have a way out that's safe. Our fire marshal's team's always involved in, in those types of things, as well as our building permits team.
I don't remember seeing in that picture a back door to get out of that patio. Do they have to go back through the building in case of a fire, or what happens?
Let me get back to it real quick here. They actually have two gates, they've got one here, and they've got one here, and then this is a larger gate because they do have their overhead door, I know that I've got too many circles on there. They have their overhead door right back here where they take in their deliveries so that they can have a truck back in there if they needed to. But these will all have the accessible exits so that they're able to get in and out. They don't really want this to be accessed, you park around and walk through the back, they're going to make people come to the front.
I get that, the safety issue.
For the safety, but you are able to egress that way, and they will be making sure that there's a, a path back to the parking lot.
Thank you.
Larry, was there anything else? I interrupted on that.
No, ma'am.
Because I couldn't remember the gate on that when you brought up ADA.
No more questions.
Okay. Karen?
My questions aren't specific to the funding of these projects, but they're related to this conversation. Do you want me to hold them till the end?
We'll ask it and we'll decide whether it's allowable.
See if I make it through the door. Once a project is approved, what's the time limit for the funding? Does it, does it start with initiation? Does it, does it commence with when the project is finished? How long do they have to spend the money that's being awarded to them in grant form?
So once they get approved through council, if council approves the dollars amount, then we do a, a contract agreement with them. Our standard agreements are two years, and then after that two years, if they have not completed the work, then I've actually really kind of before that, we start investigating to see if they're going to meet that deadline. Some projects come back and ask for an extension. Those extensions do go to the board, the tiers board, with a staff recommendation of yes or no depending on what the circumstances are. In fact, at our last board meeting, we had one that came forward for an extension because they had to have some more extensive engineering work done, and so they haven't been able to find the right contractor, and so we recommended approval for that. Typically, we do a six-month extension, sometimes it'll be a year extension depending on the circumstances of availabilities of contractors and things like that.
Okay. Next question. Are first-time applicants prioritized over repeat applicants?
That's a very good question. I would have to dig into the incentives just to make sure. I know that there, I believe there's a timeframe if you were awarded that you can't come back, but I'm, I'm not 100% sure to give you a confident answer, but I can certainly research that. But Karen?
Well, I think the bylaws we, at one point, had submitted to tiers. I think that people who'd received funding for a specific project would sort of come to the bottom of the list, and new projects would be first, but I don't know where that went.
I think that in the, in the scoring criteria, there has to be some of that, we, criteria that we go through to rank the project, is it giving economic value? Is it, you know, there's a whole list of things. In this particular case, regardless, there was way more money than there was projects requested, so even those that may have received prior, you know, may have not scored at the top, but they all are being brought forward as viable projects. But we can look into that, especially from the scoring aspect, where it makes sure to give, you know, new ones more points for that versus one that's already received.
Is that, okay. Harry? Tommy? All right, with that, then, may I ask for a motion for approval of item E? Moved by Harry, seconded by Larry. Public comment, please. Welcome back.
Thank you. Zane White, District 6. Mayor, you had asked about, or you had mentioned that you believed that the awnings for the cactus had already been approved. They actually were at a DHRC meeting on January 26th, '23. That's the last thing that I could find in all of the, the tiers agenda archives and the DHRC review commission archives. That's all for 2023 that I could find relating to that. So the last meeting, and I really encourage you guys to look at the video very, very carefully on that meeting, because the issues that I've got are serious legal issues that are going to come back and bite COSA if you don't address them now. There were misstatements made by planning staff, misrepresentations, intentionally or otherwise, made to the DHRC board. Legal, I'm sorry, yeah, legal, legal made some misstatements as well, inaccuracies. And because of that, and because this is a $75,000 contract, any of that, even the language, if the language is wrong, that should void the contract. I didn't see any severability clauses. I'm not aware of any, maybe there are, but these are matters of terminology, structural terminology. At the core of it is canopies versus awnings. The planning representative mentioned that there was a Department of Interior allowance for cloth, I'm sorry, for metal canopies, and that based upon that, the metal awnings that Bluger was requesting were acceptable, based upon the... metal awnings that Fluger was requesting, uh, were acceptable, based upon the Department of Interior guidelines, which are listed on the DHRC, uh, website. Um, even in the, even in the regular agenda, meeting agenda that was posted, uh, on January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, it has down, uh, thirty-sixties two, a request for certificate of appropriateness for replacement of canopies and repainting of doors and window trim. There is no replacement of canopies. Uh, there's a structural difference between canopies and awnings, and that alone should wipe this out. I'm encouraging you to go back, start from scratch, uh, cross your Ts and dot your Is, and then come back with it for Mr. Fluger. Because if you don't, and this is litigated from someone in the public, and Mr. Fluger is going to be forced to repay that money back to the, back to tiers or back to the citizenry, and he's not going to be happy about that. This is one situation where I couldn't find any irregularities on Mr. Fluger's part in the application, so therefore that would fall back on the city for him having to cough that money back up. So, and I think we know probably what would happen there. Uh, so that's, that's the main thing. As far as specifics on what's allowed and what's not, according to the Secretary of the Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties, the standards for restoration guidelines for restoring historic buildings, materials, and features from the restoration period will be retained and preserved. That's, that means fabric awnings. The removal of materials or alteration features, spaces, and spatial relationships that characterize the period will not be undertaken. That's the removal of materials will not be undertaken. Each property will be recognized as physical record of its time, place, and use, which is nineteen twenty-nine. Each property will, I'm sorry, distinctive features, materials, finishes, and construction techniques, or examples of craftsmanship that characterize the restoration period, will be preserved. Deteriorated features from the restoration period will be repaired rather than replaced. Where the severity of deterioration requires replacement of a distinctive feature, the new feature will match the old in design, color, texture, and where possible, materials. That means fabric awnings, not metal. Period. Designs that were never executed historically will not be constructed. Again, this is on the DHRC website, in the guidelines, from the Department of Interior. Uh, and then just to, I've got some more information making distinctions between the, uh, canopies and the awnings, but I think I'm pretty clear on that so far. Um, there was a situation in, where there was, in twenty-twenty-one, there was a DHRC staff report where a local downtown, uh, requested some, uh, a canopy, and it makes the distinction in that report, that DHRC report, the distinction between canopies, which are metal. Every time you see canopies, you see metal or glass. And that was the primary statement, that if you look back at that video, you'll see that the planning representative mentioned that there was an allowance for metal canopies, and, and there are. But that's not what Fluger applied for. We're talking fabric awnings to be replaced by historically inappropriate metal awnings.
Teresa, comment on that?
Um, I think that the important term that has been used is those are guidelines, and it is direction that's given to the DHRC, but they do have discretion to make their own determination as on what's most appropriate for our downtown. So I think the important thing to note is that the process to go to the DHRC for approval, that is what occurred. They gave their approval based on their professional, um, knowledge and experience and understanding of what's appropriate for downtown, and so that paved the way for Mr. Fluger to come forward to apply for this tiers funding.
My question would be, the Department of Interior, which oversees historic redevelopment, our DHRC would be allowed to create lesser standards than the Department of Interior for historic projects?
Those are not adopted standards. They're guidelines, and they are pretty general in the way that they are written regarding color and what is, I mean, there's always lots of discussions. Do you paint brick or don't you paint brick? If you read those guidelines, they would say, don't paint brick, but there are some instances where we allow that to happen. So, um, it's not the same as an adopted ordinance where it's a rule that staff and the board has to follow. It's just information given to them on how they should consider their decisions.
And about the subject of awning versus canopy?
I don't have any knowledge of that. I mean, we can certainly look into that if you think it's important, but again, um, generally. Generally, what is presented at the DHRC, and we could go back and look, I guess, at that meeting, but there are pictures that they request of what exactly is going to be, um, installed. They don't take just general, I've never seen them take just general descriptions of anything. They won't even paint samples. So I would assume that, um, they knew that these were going to be metal and that the distinction for them between a canopy is, is, was not relevant enough to, to deny this request. But of course, that's just my assumption. But it is not a basis to deny the tier's funding. They did seek and received approval from the DHRC.
You'll see, if you review that video, uh, that, again, there were many, this business of, uh, it's vague, it's not, it's not specific. What I just read you is specific, and yes, it does apply. Uh, the interpretation is really convenient when it comes to Mr. Fluger, Lee Fluger. Uh, and this is a pattern that's gone on for years, and you can go back two years, which is how long I've been back in town, a little over that, and you can look at all of the DHRC meetings in which Fluger had something going on at the, uh, Cactus Hotel, and the, your, your husband, John James, who was the previous planning manager, uh, got really creative and really interpretive, and it was always in favor of Mr. Fluger. You know that. Everybody in town knows that. There's been a lot of things that were, uh, just completely blown off. You've got three floors of windows at the cactus that weren't approved. The canopy, one of the pictures that you're talking about, about canopies that were submitted, there weren't any paint, uh, chips, nothing. There were, the two pictures that were here previously, those were the only pictures that were shown to tiers. Also, there's a completely, this, this, uh, question here for approval, about thirty-three thousand of that.
Please speak to the board.
About thirty-three thousand of that was for the, uh, just for the awnings. The rest of it was for ADA compliance, security entrances, and painting, repainting on the exterior, uh, along the storefronts. There was no discussion in that since January twentieth, a year ago, over a year ago, that I can find. And if it's not on the website, then that's an open meeting situation, uh, or a, um, failure to disclose to the public what's going on. So as far as what tiers had before them, if you'll look at that video, which was just about a week ago, I believe, all they had presented to them from DHRC from a year ago was the two photos that you had earlier, one with the cloth tattered awning, one with the metal awning. There were two, two pictures of that side by side. That's all they got. Also, Mr. Fluger said that the, uh, color would be green, and then he, he did show them a picture of something that was gray. There were two different designs on the canopy styles. One of them was gray. So we don't know whether it's going to be green, whether it's going to be gray. It's sloppy. It's lazy. It appears to be corrupt, the, the entire process, as, as it goes with the DHRC approval. And I'm not necessarily blaming the people on the DHRC board. I believe they've been manipulated primarily, maybe with an exception or two. They've been manipulated by planning, and they've been manipulated by legal to push these things through. It's sloppy, sort of like Aaron here earlier, uh, you know, and this has been going on for years. You know, I don't know. That's a good question. I'll have to get back to you. And then that's the end of it. And then there's executive approval or administrative approval at the planning level, which the public doesn't have access to, nothing. It's a setup for people that want to get things done. Planning and legal make it happen. And the oversight is atrocious. It's almost non-existent, and...
Mayor, his time has been exceeded, and he's kind of off topic right now.
I don't know how that's off topic.
Please speak to the board. Thank you.
Talking about, talking about planning and the, the way that the deficits in the planning situation and the DHRC and the tiers, I don't know how that's off topic.
Thank you, Zane. Thank you. Questions, comments, challenges, issues?
Based on the comments provided, I, I feel uncertain, uh, about voting in favor of thirty-sixties two. I'd like a chance to review some of the materials that were referenced. Can we remove that item and approve the remaining five?
I believe you can, and if there's specific information you'd like us to research, like pulling that, uh, data from prior applications, we can pull that, get that information for you, and bring this item back.
A, a couple of people, uh, from council have asked that specific question, so that one for sure. And, um, the information suggested that referenced historic preservation oversight in the rules and regulations about materials and colors and whatnot. I, I'd like to know personally. It may, it may be a small thing to, and I'm sorry to delay a, a worthy project, but I, I'm not comfortable voting on that one today.
Those items, we can show you what was presented, but I can guarantee you, it's like they said, the, the DHRC has reviewed. You have the right to
Right.
change it if you want to, but we can bring that detail back.
Well, I think what has been brought up is one of the things that I do have concerns about, and that is, in order to have a true historic, uh, district, which we've created a historic district overlay, we need to not have so much, if you will, leeway on approving what is historic, what's not, what is allowed in a Department of Interior over historic buildings. We can't just leave it up to personal opinion, or else we give up what is truly historic district, and the, the need and the desire to truly have a historic district. We can't be kind of a historic district with exceptions to that. We either are or we aren't. So, but with that, we had a motion, I believe in a second. So we would need to, um, deny approval of that motion before we then move on to address what Karen is asking for.
Or Harry could amend his motion if he so chooses.
Harry, would you like to amend your motion?
I will amend the motion to just have five properties, forty west two, two fourteen South Chadburn, two oh two Martin Luther King, one twenty-three North Chadburn, and four forty-one Rio Concho Drive, and approve those tiers requests.
Okay, so the motion has been amended, excluding thirty-sixties two at the moment. Any further comment on that change in the motion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote on that. Those in favor of the new motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. We now move into a closed session, which is not happening. There are no items in the closed session, so we will follow up with the, uh, administrative issues, consider items discussed in executive session, which again is zero. Announcements and consideration of future agenda items, which is to consider dates and scheduling for the next strategic workshop. Daniel?
Mayor, I'm going to ask that we move that to the next city council meeting for discussion since we're being, we're missing two city council members.
Yeah.
So this is going to hold up.
Then may I have a motion for adjournment?
Don't move.
By Tommy, the seconded by Brenda?
Harry.
For Harry?
I wait for Tom, but he's not here.
Yeah. All right. With that, all of those in favor of adjourning this meeting at ten thirty-six AM, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is officially adjourned.